A B one, two, three, four, training at two o'clock.
Okay, thank you. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number nine, which is the selenium monitoring, and we're taking, shifting some money around. I just want to be sure it's not going to impact our irrigation program, because that's been very successful. And I know we had some matching funds, and we're waiting for the grant from the city. So I get some clarification on that.
Yes, um, yeah, it's not going to impact that program. Essentially, what's happening is that the property for grant money's been delayed.
Okay.
So that was our matching money. So essentially, we're just going to borrow it for now, and then in the next budget, we'll be whole.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to compliment on report number fourteen, which was on the upgrade of the parking control citation handheld equipment. We've had some comments over the last couple of months about reports maybe not being as clear as they should. This was just a model. I got all the information I needed. I'm sure the public did, too, so. And it wasn't long. It was still very concise.
Okay. Councilwoman Webb?
I have none.
Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilwoman Zantky?
None, thank you.
Representative Tim Curry?
No items.
And I have none. We'll do public comments now. So does anyone want to comment on anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, are we ready? Yep?
Not quite.
Well, that's a long boot up for that thing. Just going to do it tonight. Yeah. Unless someone beats me to it. Do we have an introduction we can get started with or anything, Homer, before the PowerPoint?
No, it's going to talk once it's going to begin.
It is?
There you go.
All right. Okay, so the first item discussion this afternoon, I guess the only item for discussion, is the Oceanfront Walk Safety Steering Committee recommendations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As I'm sure you will recall, late last fall, the city became aware of some increasing tensions along the Oceanfront Walk, commonly called the boardwalk, and some issues developing between pedestrians and cyclists and Suri drivers and other uses on the boardwalk. Councilmember Mike Hen at that time suggested we host a community meeting to gather directly the comments and suggestions from the residents and the businesses along the peninsula. You have mine? So on December tenth, we held a community meeting, and three main issues surfaced. Primarily, we heard that there was excessive speeding by cyclists. Also, residents talked about the proliferation of motorized devices, specifically motorized skateboards, scooters, bikes. Segways were also on the list of items mentioned, and we'll get into that discussion a bit more this evening when Captain Johnson makes his report. We also heard that residents felt there was a lack of consistent enforcement of the current ordinance that covers safety along the Oceanfront Walk. The group also came up with a list of suggestions and ideas, and they, first of all, they said we should start calling it by its given name, which is the Oceanfront Walk. They also suggested that we widen the path by a couple of feet to make some more room for the users, to add a separate bike lane to physically separate bikes and pedestrians. Another suggestion was to add some traffic calming devices, such as rippled pavement, to give people the signal to slow down. They thought we definitely needed some improved signage so that people understood what uses were allowed and what's not allowed along the oceanfront. And another issue that surfaced was many people didn't understand what eight miles per hour felt like on a bike. So they suggested we put in some radar devices so people could pace themselves and see the speed. And lastly, to do education outreach to make residents and visitors more aware of the existing regulations for the oceanfront. From that meeting, a steering committee was formed. It's chaired by Councilmember Hen, and there's a group of people that really represent a cross-section of the interests. We have two oceanfront residents, Doty Beek and Bill Mace. Dale Head owns a local bike shop. Laura Keen represents the Central Newport Beach Community Association, and Danny Sullivan and Joe Reese also live on the peninsula. All of our users, their families, their friends regularly use the oceanfront. So the committee had a few objectives, primarily to evaluate the list of suggestions and ideas that surfaced from our community meeting. And they spent the past few months going through the ideas of increasing enforcement, enhancing the striping and signage along the oceanfront, and improving our education and outreach. They also spent some time looking at some of the structural suggestions, such as the widening or the actual building of a separate bike lane. Captain Dale Johnson, our commander from our patrol division of the police department, will talk about the committee's enforcement recommendations and also our education efforts. And then Tony Bryant, our city traffic engineer, will go through some of the structural ideas and the signing and striping recommendations that they came up with.
Good afternoon, members of the council. We're also very fortunate. Several members of the steering committee are here with us today also to support us in some of the recommendations that we were going to make. In terms of enforcement, we looked at the enforcement of the ordinances that currently supported our role down there today. The current ordinance we have, twelve fifty-four Newport Beach municipal code, sets a speed limit on the oceanfront sidewalk at eight miles per hour, prohibits safe operation. It establishes a walk zone in the pavilion area of the Newport Pier, prohibits motorized scooters, and it requires users to keep right, follow the rules of the road. It also prohibits the use of skateboarding on the sidewalk also. Essentially, the vehicles that are on there, this became a large portion of our discussion in terms of the vehicles that are currently allowed on the sidewalk and those that are prohibited. Those which are allowed currently include bicycles, rollerblades or roller skates, scooters, meaning the non-motorized razors, as my son calls them, that type of vehicle, looks like a skateboard with a handle that you hold on to. And segways are currently allowed also. Those which are specifically not allowed are Suri cycles or the Suris, which are the large carriage type of devices which are powered via a bicycle pedaling motion, as well as skateboards, and any motorized device. And that would include motorized bicycles, scooters, or any other device. Now, the committee recommendations, what we talked about was, you know, to enforce the unsafe operation and the prohibited uses of the sidewalk. Some of the other ordinances we have from the police department's perspective are very, very difficult for us to enforce. For instance, eight miles an hour is the speed limit which is set by ordinance on the oceanfront sidewalk. However, we really don't have an ability to enforce that with speed surveys, an accurate measure of exactly what the speed is, what's the overage and the underage. So the eight miles an hour, while it is set as an ordinance, really doesn't provide the police department a foundation in order to do speed enforcement itself. But what it does allow us to do is to enforce this idea of unsafe operation and prohibited uses on the sidewalks. We can certainly enforce the motorized scooters, the use of skateboards, or motorized devices on there. We can also enforce unsafe operation. That provides us a very broad foundation to look at the action and the activities that are occurring on the boardwalk. While eight miles an hour can't be enforced, certainly the person that we're able to observe driving at a clearly high rate of speed, perhaps on a bicycle weaving in and out of traffic when there's a great deal of pedestrian traffic, you know, that's one that we can stop and subjectively say that's unsafe on its face, and we can certainly continue to enforce it. Now, the recommendation from the committee is that we continue to allow the bicycles, rollerblades, skates, and scooters on the sidewalk, that we continue to ban the Suri cycles, skateboards, and motorized devices on the sidewalk also. In terms of the Segway conversations that we had, the local businessmen that operate the Segway dealership down on the peninsula, they've also been at our meeting and been part of our committee in many ways. They're dedicated, we believe, to being a good neighbor. They're trying really, really hard to regulate in terms of the speeds that the devices will go, regulate the activities as they occur with the people that rent from them. But there is an acknowledgement on their part that we get a number of Segway users that aren't associated with that particular business. There are businesses in Long Beach, other areas that actually bring people from outside the city down on tours and other things to utilize our sidewalk. At this time, there is no ordinance or no availability to regulate them in terms of speed. For instance, our Segway operators have indicated that they can put, for lack of a better term, a regulator on their devices to ensure that it can't exceed the eight mile an hour speed limit that we've set. However, at this point, in order to regulate people coming from the outside, there is no ordinance or ability or foundation for the police department to require that of outside vendors.
Are we, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we allowed, as a city, excuse me, I remember something about segways, and they had certain, at some point, certain protections that some other devices didn't have. So are we free to say they can't be on the boardwalk if that's the ultimate decision?
Segways fall in a rather unusual area in terms of the vehicle code and the way that it's used. It's a personal mobility device, and the easiest parallel I could draw would be that of a motorized wheelchair. It's not really for, you know, it's a personal mobility device. It's not regulated like a small scooter or a motorcycle or anything else. So it does fall under its own specific category. However, the vehicle code specifically allows the municipalities to govern the use of those devices on the sidewalks. So we do have it within our authority to create regulations to govern those if we choose to. At this point, the committee has discussed in general terms the Segway issue, but I don't think that we're prepared to make any recommendation in terms of the Segway at this time.
On your speed limit issue, you mentioned that you don't have the ability to enforce it. What would it take for you to get the ability to enforce the eight mile an hour speed limit?
I think we would have to have, first of all, a device, whether it be a radar device or other ways, in order to accurately gauge to, you know, in a scientific manner, exactly what the speed was. It would then require, and I'll allow Tony Bryant to speak to this perhaps further, you'd have to have a speed survey on the sidewalk itself. You would have to meet certain engineering requirements, and Councilwoman Webb, you're probably more familiar with what those would be than I am, in order to certify the speed and certify the, our ability to read it, what the average speed is, you know, the eighty percent speed is, so that we could, so we could support those citations in court at a later time. What all that would take specifically, I'm not sure, but I knew it would involve a process.
What's the slowest speed your radar guns will measure?
It depends on, it depends on the radar. We'll talk in a minute about it, some radar boards that I found, or that we were able to identify, that are able to register the eight mile an hour speed and even below that. Whether or not this particular device would qualify for court purposes, I'm not sure.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend the committee. I think you've done an excellent job on this report. It looks very comprehensive. I guess the one thing that jumps out at me is Suris, because when I've been down there, you know, they're the slowest moving vehicles on the boardwalk. They appear to be usually operated by parents with small children. I saw one occasion, it looked like a group of Amish girls, or other folks who are not in any particular hurry and are moving relatively slow. What was the thinking behind the, I guess, continued prohibition on Suris, even though we've got a vendor down there who rents them?
The thought process of the committee with the segways are that the sidewalk itself is just merely not wide enough.
Suris.
I apologize, the Suris, that they are not, it's simply not wide enough to handle the traffic that's created by them. I think that was the primary issue at stake. When you have a small sidewalk, which is already in many ways filled with bicyclists, pedestrians, other of these individual type scooters, one designed to carry anywhere between four to six people, just takes up too much space. It's a little bit ungainly, given the, again, the traffic and the environment down there. The community specifically, those that live on the boardwalk and those that utilize the boardwalk, were quite supportive of maintaining the prohibition on the Suri cycles. That being said, in regards to the Suris, they do create a unique problem for us also in terms of enforcement. There really is nowhere else for them to ride. They're not allowed on the street either. And from an enforcement standpoint, very, very often, whereas the vendors that rent those, you know, they, they're required to have signs. It's required in their rental agreements that they indicate they're not allowed on the oceanfront walkway, sidewalk. But very often, they find themselves on there anyway, not familiar with how we define what a sidewalk is. When we contact them in this clear violation, they're very often tourists or people that are not from the area that simply didn't know where they were at, and our police officers are very often hesitant to enforce that ordinance as a result. Quite frankly, that creates some frustration on part of the committee also, that, you know, perhaps in that respect, that they would prefer a little bit more enforcement along those lines, and again, something we're working through.
Well, it sounds like from the staff report, though, that the primary vendor for renting these Suris has sort of agreed to get out of that business. Is that what's going on?
The largest, perhaps, yes, sir. I wasn't aware that he was agreeing to get out of the business, but certainly to assist us in terms of the regulation of the Suri cycles further.
I can add a bit of clarification to that. What he has offered to do is sell, and in any event, not rent, the largest of the Suris, the so-called limo size Suri that can hold six or eight people in it, which are completely ungainly and very large and obstructive on the boardwalk. So he's agreed to do that. That would still leave the Suris that could hold two to four people, that would continue to be rented, but which are still prohibited on the oceanfront walk.
But they're prohibited everywhere else, too.
They could be ridden in an area with a bike lane and those sort of areas.
Where on the peninsula do we have that, except on the oceanwalk?
The bike lanes exist on Seashore Drive, and I'm not sure if they exist on other places on Balboa, but I don't think so.
Aren't they allowed to ride in the traffic lane?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
They're considered the same as a bicycle. If you have insufficient room in the lane, a bicycle is allowed to take the full lane, I think, unless I'm wrong.
I'm not sure. Something we certainly look into. In terms of some of the other suggestions from the committee, one of them was a way to try to monitor the speeds as they exist on the sidewalk now. We were able to find this device, which is actually a dolly-mounted radar board. It's on, if you look at the wheels below it, it's actually on a furniture dolly. It's very lightweight, self-contained. The toolbox on the bottom of it contains the batteries and all the operating computers and everything else. It can be secured to the street poles in this manner, as you see at Twenty Street and Twenty-Eighth Street and the oceanfront sidewalk. It can be set up to display to bicyclists heading, in this case, westbound, what the speeds are. Just empirical evidence while we were out there, as people rode, and you can see it wasn't a tremendously busy day on the sidewalk, but as people rode by, they were getting their speeds from quite a ways down the boardwalk or the oceanfront sidewalk, and were able to slow down. I was out there in plain clothes at the time, and people saw their speeds and attempted to slow down. We find, the committee found that this would be beneficial, operating under the idea that the vast majority of people out there want to comply with the law and the regulation and the speed, and this merely provides them an opportunity to see exactly what that speed feels like. We had the opportunity to acquire two of these devices that we could, not just during our saturation patrols, which I'll talk back and I'll talk about in a second, but also throughout the summer. They could be deployed in the morning, set out there, much like our regular radar trailers are, to remind people what the speed is and what exactly the speed looks like and feels like as they operate on the boardwalk.
Captain Johnson, does that pick up a runner, for example?
It will not. It appears as if it's sensitive enough to pick up the bicycles and the metal that is provided within the bicycles, but does not, the pedestrians and the running, and even the skaters, it did not register.
But as you mentioned earlier, that particular device would not qualify in terms of accuracy and calibration for a police officer to actually issue a citation based on the reading of it.
I wouldn't think, as it's currently calibrated, no. It would require that certification. Also, in terms of enforcement, we also talked about an idea of a saturation patrol. The police department, you know, clearly enforcement is very often a key to a lot of these issues that we're talking about, but the police department, like every other department, is, you know, asked to be, do more with less, prioritize where we're at and what we're able to do. So we came up with this idea of a saturation patrol, and the idea of the saturation patrol would be almost like that of a DUI checkpoint or a DUI saturation patrol. It could serve two purposes. First of all, it allows us to schedule times to do targeted enforcement for these issues on the oceanfront sidewalk. It also allows us the opportunity to contact the public in that environment and provide them information, education concerning the problems on the sidewalk, and to try to explain to them the issues as they exist and to educate them in that manner. What we've suggested we do is to create four of these saturation days, we would call them a boardwalk sidewalk safety day, over the course of the summer, and two more throughout the course of the, through the rest of the year. We believe that the police department, we can do that with minimum impact on our budget with existing officers that are working and supplementing them with reserve officers, explorers, as well as volunteers. To give a brief idea, the way that it would look, and this is just one half of the peninsula here, you can see the blue dots, and they would represent the police departments. They would work in two-man footbeat teams and be five or eight blocks away from one another. This would also continue all the way down to the termination of the boardwalk, I'm sorry, the sidewalk, down further on east on Balboa. The blue dots would represent the police officers, and they would merely walk up and down between these areas here. Probably the first one, and we're scheduling it at this time for May twenty-third, which is the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. They would probably, at that point, be into education. They would want to tell people that are on skateboards or on other devices that they're prohibited, talk about the unsafe operation. We also are in the process of creating a three-fold pamphlet that explains these issues, as well as the other efforts that we're making on behalf of the safety program. The red dots would represent our volunteers, whether they would be explorers, or they would be volunteers in our volunteer program. They could set up EZ UPS or other shade devices to that area, and they would be the question and answer people. They could try to actually meet the public in a non-enforcement scenario, again, providing information, providing these pamphlets, answering any questions that may be available. We have a yellow dot that's right here. That would signify a motor officer that we would put at Main and Balboa that would look at the issue that we have there, and also, I believe, at Palm and Balboa, I'm sorry, in the sidewalk, of both pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular traffic running the red lights in either way, meaning the pedestrians going across Balboa, the sidewalk across Main and Palm, as well as the vehicular traffic that does the same thing. Do you want to go ahead again? This would be the rest of the sidewalk as it heads further west. You can see more police officers that are stationed, more of our volunteers would be stationed, as well as these green devices, and those would be the radar boards that we're going to employ, again, giving people an idea of exactly what their speed is. In terms of the increased education, we'd also like to do a full-court press in terms of getting the media involved and the community involved, letting them know what the issues are down there, you know, how they can impact that in a positive way. In terms of, in addition to the enforcement, we'd like to do a media outreach involving the newspaper, Daily Pilot, Orange County Register, kind of very, very similar as we do with our DUI program, where we let them know that we're going to be out there and force, conducting this enforcement on these safety days, letting them know what the rules of the road are, the things that we're concerned about, following up on the day of in terms of providing them information as to how many citations were issued, how many people were contacted, any arrests that were made subsequent to it also, both pre and post publicity along those lines. In terms of reaching out to the community, the speed monitoring devices will be deployed, you know, throughout the summertime and any heavy days on the boardwalk. The MBTV site, police department's currently producing an eight or nine-minute segment that will be in heavy rotation concerning the issues that are developed down there so that we can get that out for everyone to see. That video, as well as other information, will be linked both to the city website, as well as the police department website. We have newsletters that we can develop, that can go out. We are currently developing the flyer that will be handed out, not just prior and during the event itself, but it's also our intent to have that included in our summer rental packages, explaining to those that come to our city during the summer what our expectations are on the sidewalk also. The Homer Association Bike Shops, local retailers, TERRA's come up with an entire plan in terms of outreach in that manner, in order to let people know what the problems are down there, combining that with heavy enforcement on specific days, and also our bike unit to become more active down there on the sidewalk in terms of enforcement basis also. Yes, sir?
You mentioned bike unit. How many officers do we have on bicycles normally doing a regular shift throughout the city?
Currently, we have four that are assigned to our bicycle unit altogether. That is because of a variety of reasons. That's down from six. At any given time, usually on Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays are the days they work, and they, we'll have one work a day, a day shift, and one work in a night shift. So on those days, which are primarily our busiest days, we'll have a two-man team during the day and a two-man team during the night. If there are any questions, I'll turn it over at this point to Tony Bryant. He'll talk about some of the signage issues and other improvements we're hoping to make. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council. This is where the Public Works Department became involved in the committee and the process. Worked with the committee on some recommendations for new types of signage that could be used to warn the users of the oceanfront sidewalk as to their speeds and safety on the sidewalk as well. There are currently regulatory signs at every street end now on the streetlight poles that talk about the speed limit for the users of the sidewalk, and also the regulations in terms of what is prohibited. I think today, it talks about motorized vehicles and skateboards is what is on the posted sign. So I think the committee wanted to change that sign, add some additional uses that are restricted on the boardwalk so that it was clear to the users. What the committee decided to, what they discussed and they recommended to do was to use a sequence of signage along the boardwalk, updating the regulatory signs, and also providing for new message signs that could be added sequentially along the sidewalk to provide that message to the users. The committee wanted to develop some unique types of message signs, something that would stand out from the typical warning sign, something that the users would look at and they would see as, you know, a new type of warning device. The new striping that we looked at doing was changing out what's out there today. There's some dashed yellow centerline striping. There's also some double yellow striping at the street ends today. There's existing pavement markings on the sidewalk about the eight mile an hour speed limit, keep right messages, direction signs, that type of thing. So we looked at the entire striping on the boardwalk and what changes could be made. This is the new type of regulatory sign that we were looking at using. As I mentioned, today, there are combination speed limit and regulation signs at each street end. We were talking about changing out that signage to a new type of sign where the, it was more clear on the speed limit that all users have the eight mile an hour speed limit. And then we added to the no sign, the other types of operations that are restricted on the boardwalk, including the unsafe operation, smoking, Suris, skateboarding, and motorized vehicle. The only two that are on that sign today are the bottom two, the skateboarding, motorized vehicles. The other information's been added to that sign to make it more clear. I think the primary one that the police department can really use to do enforcement is the first one, the unsafe operation.
Do we get any, since we currently have motorized vehicles, to me, a motorized vehicle is not, I mean, I don't think in terms of a motorized scooter. That doesn't seem like a motorized vehicle to me. I realize it is, but do we get that confusion from people currently, they saying, oh, I'm not into vehicle because the vehicle's a car or a motorcycle or something?
I'm not certain in terms of the discussion that was had with the community during the meetings.
If I could take that question, there actually was a great deal of discussion about that exact issue, and we discussed whether or not it should indicate motorized vehicle or motorized device. And we went back and forth, and in the end, we decided to err on behalf And we went back and forth and in the end, we decided to err on behalf of the vehicle code. The vehicle code refers to these as vehicles as opposed to devices and that was, but we had that exact conversation and it was actually one that we went back and forth on. That's what we came up with.
It's safe to say, anyone that has a better suggestion, we're all ears for it. That's a tough one, but I should also point out, Tony is filling in for Brad Summers who couldn't be here. Brad Summers was the person that actually on Tony's staff that really supported this and so Tony might not be able to answer some of the questions about the give and take.
I think that Brad Summers of my staff should deserve all the credit for the hard work he put into the signage and the meetings with the committee. This is a sign that we came up with just recently in terms of just adding that additional message in terms of the surries being prohibited on the oceanfront walk. The idea was that these signs would be installed at either end of the boardwalk and also specifically at those locations where the surries are rented so that it became a little more clear to people that rented the surries as they were entering onto the sidewalk that, in fact, they're prohibited from using the oceanfront walk for surries.
Can we put them outside the door of every rental place?
Well, actually, you know, you're being facetious, but why not have a sticker or something put actually on the surry so that people, when they get in the surry, they see that they're not supposed to be riding on the oceanfront.
As far as I know, today, the surries have stickers and information within the surry itself that says that they're restricted on the oceanfront walk. And then also, at the time that they're rented, the bicycle shop owner provides that information to the person renting the vehicle as well. So I think that there's, the information is there, but I think naturally, the surry user wants to go to a location that they feel is safe and where they want to use it and be able to ride along the beach and have the view, et cetera, and that's why you end up with surry users on the oceanfront.
But as a practical matter, I mean, aren't the surry rental locations, is one of them maybe at McFadden Square and one of them over at Main and, you know, near the Balboa Inn? I mean, they're adjacent to the oceanfront walk, right?
That's correct.
There's actually one on the oceanfront sidewalk.
Well, that's what I was.
At Palm Street.
I was saying, and so, you know, I think the sign's disingenuous because if, in fact, they can't be on the streets, they really can't be anywhere on the peninsula.
Well, I think that was the question that Councilman Webb had, was whether they can be on the streets, and they are a vehicle, so they can be on the street. But then it comes back to, is it safe for the surries to actually be using the streets and riding on the streets? And I've seen surries down in near Balboa Village riding on the streets, and I wouldn't say it's necessarily a safe thing, but from the standpoint that they're restricted on the sidewalk, their options for riding surries are pretty limited.
It seems like to me that the council needs to make a decision one way or the other. I personally, for many, many years, have felt that we ought to just prohibit surry cycles, surry vehicles, whatever you want to call them, within the city because there really isn't a safe spot for them to operate. So this is something that we need to discuss and make a decision on, but in the past, we haven't really ever wanted to step up and make that decision.
Yeah, you'll see in the staff report that the committee felt strongly that surries should be prohibited and wasn't sure about going farther than that by prohibiting the rental of them. And so there was a question in the staff report, asked of the city attorney's office to give a view of how that prohibition might be implemented and, you know, the advisability of it, so.
And I agree with you. It's an inherent conflict. I mean, it's like an attractive nuisance almost. I mean, if they can be rented, they're going to be used on the boardwalk and enforcement can slow that down, but it'll never stop it.
And I found it interesting, there was some discussion in the last committee meeting about using just the term surry itself and that there's people within the public that are not even certain what a surry is. When they see a sign on the boardwalk that says surries prohibited, they may not be even certain themselves what a surry is.
Picture it also.
In this case, yes. So again, we came up with a series of warning signs that could be used sequentially along the sidewalk to provide that message, that additional safety message to the users. This was one of the signs that the committee recommended using. And there were two other signs that were developed, that were discussed with the committee and that they decided that they wanted to support and that they recommended using as well. And these are kind of unique signs, the share the path and the beach crossing signs particularly. I think that's one that is unique and would be interspersed along the sidewalk to provide that message.
I think that the signs look good. They're very graphically clean and say the message. My only concern is, are we adding so many signs or are these going to just be replacements? Because sometimes we get in the position, we have so many signs that finally you just go, you don't look at them, or there's sign pollution.
No, these are replacements because as I mentioned, at every street end, you have the regulatory sign. So every street end has the eight mile an hour and the no restrictive signs. So what you would do here, the sequence would work like this. You would have a regulatory eight mile an hour sign on one street end. Next end, you would have, let's say, a share the path. Then the next street end, you would have that regulatory sign again because we wanted to have regulatory signs every two blocks. Then the next one, you could mix in another one like a beach crossing sign. Then the next one, another regulatory, and then a slowdown, and then continuing on in that type of sequence. So you're definitely mixing these warning signs in.
Doesn't the no sign have other things on it now that are not included on that sign? Like, you're not supposed to have glass bottles on the beach. I think you're not allowed to walk your dog on the beach in certain hours. Those also appear on that sign. Huh?
That's a street.
Oh, so it's a different, so we're talking about a different sign? Okay, very good.
These are perpendicular to the oceanfront, to the sidewalk, whereas those regulatory signs are parallel to it, I think. But I guess if you, I would be concerned that will somebody have the argument that if you only have the beach front, or the beach crossing signs every fourth block or every eighth block, is that going to be the only place you have to worry about it? If you sign one location and you don't sign all of them, are you going to have a problem?
And that was some discussion. In fact, the original submittal of that sign was beach crossing without the S on the end, and then there was some discussion about that and it was decided, well, let's just add an S and then it's general in terms of, well, when you work your way along, there's people crossing at all locations along the sidewalk going to the beach. So to intersperse those signs, I think we came up with that general type sign. And as far as the striping is concerned, as I mentioned, we have currently on the sidewalk, there is a dashed yellow centerline stripe. When you get to the street ends, it's a double yellow stripe and there's messages along the sidewalk as well, eight miles an hour, keep right, there's directional arrows as well. So there was discussion as to whether there could be changes in that striping that would make it more clear, especially that the bicyclist needed to stay on the right side of the oceanfront as they rode down the sidewalk. Initially, there was a lot of talk about changing out that dash sign, that dash stripe to a double yellow stripe to make it more clear. In the end, after some of the talk, it was decided that we would just stripe over the single dashed with a single yellow stripe in the center and that would be the type of change we would make. The double yellow at the street ends would be maintained. All of the pavement messages would be maintained. Another addition would be putting a yellow bar stripe, if you will, at the end of the sidewalks on the street ends coming into the boardwalk. So it's just an additional message to those pedestrians stepping onto the, to the boardwalk that they're entering into, to a mixed-use facility. And the long-term recommendations that were discussed during the committee meetings were looking at widening the sidewalk, whether that would be something to, that would be, increase the safety on the sidewalk, just providing that extra width, providing the mix of pedestrians and bicyclists that safety, and would it make sense to widen out by, let's say, two feet or five feet? Would it make it safer that way? We did look at the cost, tried to come up with an estimate of the cost with widening it out by two feet for the length of the project. It would be about one and a half million dollars. Widening it out by five feet would be about over two million dollars. Adding a separate bike lane, I think there was some discussion there and that that would make it safer, especially for the pedestrians and other users, that you'd have a separate bike lane. I think in discussions with other cities that we had, what we found out was when you provide that separate bike lane, now you've just giving the bicyclists, you know, an area to ride faster, doesn't necessarily make things safer. And also, there was a lot of discussion that if we were going to build a separate bike lane on the sand in the beach area, there was going to be some coastal commission issues perhaps as part of that process. And again, the traffic calming was raised initially. Were there potential things that could be done on the sidewalk to slow the bicyclists down? You know, rutted edges along the sidewalk, even speed bumps, I think, were brought up in one of the initial discussions. I think there's all pros and cons. Probably if you were going to do rutting itself, that might make things unsafe for the rollerbladers and roller skaters, et cetera. So, and we also did a little bit of research ourselves to see if there was any other locations, any other boardwalks or sidewalks that had any type of traffic calming on them. We couldn't find anything that would suggest appropriate traffic calming measures. And then the other area that we're going to look at in the future is the area around McFadden and the parking lot where the bike path comes into that area and whether there are things that can be done to route the bicyclists around the McFadden parking lot, make it a little bit safer so that when they come in, they're not cutting through or riding on the sidewalk adjacent to the businesses or riding through the parking lot itself and whether we can make things safer through that area. And I think that's it for the public works involvement, for the signing and striping. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Tony? Okay, thank you, Tony. How many people are going to want to speak on this? Okay, what for public comments?
Mike Johnson, I live at 58th Street and Seashore, and I only want to make two points. Number one, I like those picture signs because I see a lot of foreign-speaking people using our area and it concerns me not only for safety on boardwalk, but also for the use of the ocean. I think that there's a need to have some ability to address those that do not understand English. So for safety's sake and to avoid lawsuits, I'd like to have that considered by the committee.
Tom Loughlin, Balboa, brings back memories of our meetings, Todd Ridgeway and Steve involvement in our segways in the past, and I own a Segway. But I brought up a question here with the committee, was anybody from Balboa downtown involved in this? Because the surge, I like that idea. The presence of even bicycle officers is rare in the village. And is there any thought of posting a surge area in downtown Balboa, especially like at Adams and Edgewater? It's, it needs attention and we don't see visibility of officers very often down there. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Maryam Parment and I'm a Segway owner. When I found out about this meeting and hearing, I wanted to come and share a few things. First of all, Segway users are considered pedestrians and I enjoy my Segway. I use it for transportation mostly on the weekends. Most of the Segway owners are locals and we have the same interest in safety, dignity, and serenity of the area as do other local residents. And also, one thing about segways and also riding a bicycle, knowing how to use a Segway and also ride a bicycle, they tend to be more safe. They are more controllable and what's also great about them and different modes that you can have your Segway operate. You could actually have a mode that limit your speed to eight miles an hour. And I've been on the boardwalk and on the sidewalks and I could see people that are on roller blades tend to go a lot faster than that. So as far as safety, I believe that it's really not possible to do the hot-dogging and those types of maneuvers on the segways if operated safely, obviously. Also, the demographic, only a handful of people own them and I understand that the concern really is with large groups of them and mostly the ones that come from out of the city. And maybe one possible way would be to maybe require those groups to obtain some type of Newport City business license or some type of a tour license before they bring the segways onto the city to operate them on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Michael Smith. Good afternoon, council. Who here has ridden a Segway? One, two, three. So three and three. What did you think of your Segway? Was it a dangerous vehicle? When you drove it, were you in fear of your life or endangering someone else or hurting someone else? I live in Corona Del Mar. I spend every other weekend, Maryam and I, and that's my girlfriend, Maryam and I bought our segways from Newport Segway. Last Memorial Day, we went down there, rented on the one day and decided next day that we needed to have one there, where there was so much fun. Since we've had them, I spend every other weekend on the peninsula. I take my children down there. I've been on the tour with the people that own Newport Segway. I've developed a group of friends that own property on the boardwalk. I've stopped, they've gotten on, they've taken off for the day while I occupy their couch watching a football game. It's a phenomenal, the technology is phenomenal. I suggest if you haven't ridden one, try it. To ban them from the boardwalk would be absolutely, just, it wouldn't be right. I've never come across anyone on the boardwalk that actually was offended that I was there. Most of the people stop and admire it, how much they cost, where do you get them, how can I get one? And they're thrilled with the technology. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott McElroy. I'm a local resident of Newport Beach on the Balboa Peninsula. I'm also director of the Balboa Village Business Improvement District, the volunteer webmaster of the BalboaVillage.com website, and general manager of the Segway Orange County store located in Balboa Village at 611 East Balboa Boulevard. Over the course of the past three years, I have trained over 12,000 individuals of all ages how to properly operate segways. I personally conducted well over a thousand tour groups during that same time. I'm also a user of the oceanfront boardwalk who enjoys walking, jogging, biking, and using segways. As such, I greatly appreciate that Councilman Hen, my fellow residents, our police department, and city staff has made a priority to ensure the safety of all oceanfront boardwalk users. I realize that while it may be impossible to prevent dog attacks, bike accidents, slip and falls, roller blade crashes, et cetera, that it is possible to minimize the risks of such incidents without prohibiting the freedoms we all share and enjoy. After great consideration, I believe a balance of constraints recommended by the Boardwalk Safety Steering Committee and Segway of Orange County is prudent. Such constraints include, first, minimizing boardwalk congestion by placing limits on Segway tour group sizes, operating tours single file, eliminating Segway tours on Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, and Labor Day, and having the majority of tours travel on the least congested portion of the boardwalk from Peninsula Park toward the wedge. Secondly, ensuring the safety of boardwalk users by adhering to the eight mile per hour speed limit, requiring guests to wear helmets, and requiring Segway riders to complete a safety orientation and training class. Finally, minimizing issues of liability by requiring any Segway tour operators to have Newport Beach business licenses and requiring a $1 million liability insurance policy with the city name as additionally insured. Although frequently requested by visitors to our Segway store, we do not rent segways out of the utmost respect and courtesy for our Newport Beach neighbors. We only offer guided tours and Segway sales. Both require rider orientation programs detailing polite and courteous operation of segways, including giving right of way to all others, such as pedestrians afoot, users of bicycles, roller skates, and roller blades. Over the past three and a half years, a proliferation of segways on the boardwalk has not occurred. The cost of a Segway remains a significant barrier to entry at over $5,000. Segways have a proven barrier to entry at over $5,000. Segways have a proven positive safety record. They're environmentally friendly, cannot exceed 12 miles per hour, take less distance to stop than either bicycles or roller skates, they are quiet, and are narrower, more narrow than the handlebar width of most beach crews or bicycles. I therefore respectfully request that the city council refrain from considering any ban on the use of segways, but rather find a middle ground to ensure all interested parties can share the joy and natural beauty of Newport Beach. For many residents, visitors, and people in this room today, segways and the oceanfront boardwalk have served to create positive experiences that bond parents with children, children with grandparents, and families with friends. I simply ask that you allow this uplifting legacy to continue as part of our outstanding, our outstanding community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned that they only go 12 miles per hour, but we have an eight mile an hour speed limit there.
That's correct.
How do you regulate them to eight miles an hour?
There's a mode that you can lock in on the key that sets the top speed, and then increments from four and a half miles an hour to 12 miles an hour, in half mile an hour. In half, yeah, 12 is the absolute maximum. And the platform's encrypted. There's no way to modify it. There, even by changing out gear systems and whatnot, the software has accelerometers attached to it, and the accelerometers accurately indicate to the computer the true speed of the Segway, so there's no way to modify it past 12 miles an hour. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm Bill Mays. I'm a resident down on the Balboa Peninsula. I think it comes down to the spirit of the boardwalk. I see the boardwalk as a place for people-powered devices, things like bicycles, roller skates. I thought skateboards would be okay, but apparently the committee disagreed with me. Basically, people-powered devices. And I see the Segway as being a motorized device, much like a bicycle that has an electric motor, or a razor that has an electric motor, or the kit on the electric igloo that goes scraping by my house. I see the spirit of the boardwalk as being people-powered, and that's why I would suggest a ban on all motorized devices, and I would include the Segway in that group.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Jack O'Brien. I have a fleet of segways. I use them for my business. I do marketing and promotions with them in very, very heavily trafficked trade shows, convention centers, just an event in Huntington Beach in a very crowded scenario. And I think, sitting here listening to all this, I think enforcement is the key. I think that's, that's the key to everything. I mean, you say motorized versus non-motorized. I've seen people ride bicycles at 25, 30 miles an hour, if not more, especially up in Huntington where the path is very wide. And so, I don't, I don't think the designation between motorized and non-motorized, it's speed. And I think enforcing the speed is key to the, to the issue here. I think operated, segways operated in a very safe manner when you go on a tour, or when you work for my company and promote a product or service, or do any, any sort of product sampling, you're trained prior to being let loose out on the, on the boardwalk or in the convention center. So, again, my, my two cents is I think enforcement is key. It's a very safe vehicle to operate, and I definitely think they, they should be allowed to, to go anywhere they, they would like to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Can you pull the microphone down, please?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to put my two cents in worth. I'm a longtime 45-year resident.
State your name, please.
On the same street. My name is Patricia Litten. I've raised my children in the same house, and I've seen what goes on, the boardwalk, as people call it. I call it the oceanfront. That's my playground. I ride my bicycle. I walk. I've observed many times, just sitting on a bench, and I invite you to do the same thing. Skateboards going very fast, almost running over little children, people walking their dogs. I've had one run into me. I've had a bicycle knock me off my bicycle onto the sand. Fortunately, I wasn't hurt. I invite you to remember that the city paid a very hefty price many, many years ago by someone that was killed on the oceanfront, because they were run over, not with a car. So, I believe that enforcement of some kind, because it worked with the dogs, the dog problem was, was just terrible. You couldn't even walk on the beach. Once they started giving out citations and enforcing it, we don't have that problem anymore with dogs. So, that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name's Sandy Selvin. I was one of the committee members. I live down on the peninsula. I'm also sort of in the minority on the skateboards. I think skateboards are fine. I really sort of supported the idea that they be allowed for transport, go from one place to the other, but not necessarily for tricks. I see plenty of people down there using them safely. It seems kind of unfortunate that people can't use them. On the Surry's, I think that, the challenge I have is, you've got this place renting them. We know the places that are renting them. The signs are on the Surry's. People know that they're not supposed to be able to use them. They ignore it whatsoever. Putting up the signs, even more signs that are already being, you've got signs being ignored, so putting up more signs that'll be ignored seems useless. I think that if they're not allowed, then don't allow them to be rented. The idea of going back to the users rather than the people selling them, or bringing them out there, doesn't make any sense to me. And just lastly, I'd like to stress, you know, we went through the meeting, and things pretty much seem to be okay in terms of the bicyclists and in terms of the rollerbladers and others that are out there. But I'd just like to stress that most of the issues that I tend to hear are about how the bicyclists aren't observant, or the rollerbladers aren't observant, or all these other problems. And virtually all the time I'm on the boardwalk, I'm either on a bicycle, or I am on my roller blades. And the problems I'm encountering are pedestrians who are not looking around, people walking their dogs, giant leashes getting into my way. So, one of the things I was stressing, and I asked you all to remember, is that there are problems not just with the people who are using this, who aren't walking. And hopefully with the enforcement that we'll have coming up, that'll help educate the people on their bicycles, but it'll also educate the pedestrians to be looking around and be safe as well, and to share the road with those of us that aren't walking. Thank you.
Thank you.
W.R. Dill Dean. I'm not a Segway owner. I support them, particularly the way the state law reads effective first this year, limits the size of the models that can be considered as pedestrians. The Surry's is a different story. I've had a head-on, young gal's crossed over in front of me, knocked me down. I've been hit by other bicyclists. The gentleman just spoke in reference to dogs, and some of the pedestrians are a problem, but you can handle those. My problem, big problem with the Surry's, at 1:15 today, down near the point, there were Surry's on the walk. Both of the renters operate their business on the public sidewalk. The one at Palm and Oceanfront, at 1:15 today, there were two Surry's parked and two three-wheeled bicycles. There was also the limousine, as Councilman Hen referred to, parked on the street on the no-parking side headed towards the city parking lot on Palm. They conduct, they rent outside. There's congestion there. They store outside. Their places of business are not big enough to conduct business inside, and I think the business should be conducted inside. Another problem that I experienced this past Saturday afternoon at five o'clock was down at Main and the sidewalk, the old Studio Cafe, I don't even know what it's called now. There must have been 50 to 75 people lined up, blocking the sidewalk, or I had to get off my bike and walk it around on the grass. That's where the people are trying to get in. Also, there was apparently a private function going on at the restaurant at the Balboa Bay Club. They had the sidewalk blocked. The basic work the committee does, I do support. I attended two of their meetings, and I thought there were a lot of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Frankel, 39th Street. I think the ideas that the committee have come up with are great ideas. I think the new signage is great. But the number one thing is enforcement. If our police people are not going to be visible, and they're not going to be giving out citations, all the signs in the world, all the great decisions that the committee makes are absolutely worthless.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Keane, and I was on the boardwalk committee. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the bikes and the speed. And I understand that enforcement is an issue. And I, being at all the meetings, I completely understand the police department's side. But I do want the committee to know that there are people that speed on their bikes at 20-plus miles an hour on the boardwalk all day long, especially during exercise hours, maybe prior to work, and then after-work hours. And it's, it's really dangerous. And then on the past few weekends, I've also noticed an increased number of motorized bikes. There are, there are different models, so obviously some are owned by people. But there's a particular model I am seeing throughout the day, which I believe must be rented somewhere. I'm not sure where. But I think it'd be prudent, too, to maybe somehow talk to the businesses that rent motorized bikes, and let them know that those aren't allowed on the boardwalk. And that is a big safety issue of mine. Having two little kids, and also people that come to visit Newport Beach, they may not, they, they see it says no motorized scooters. So, how's a mom to know that she is supposed to be looking for a bike to come, come whizzing by her, whether motorized or not, honestly? Some people are riding their bikes way too fast on that boardwalk. But I just think that that is an issue. The motorized bikes with those big, heavy motors on them, whether they're electric or not, I think is something that we need to look at really seriously here on our boardwalk.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Reese. I'm a peninsula resident. I was also on the committee. And first, I want to thank you guys for setting up the committee and actually to listen to the residents. And what we had, our concerns were, Councilman Hen and all the city staff did an excellent job of really facilitating the meetings, and really drawing out from us what we were hearing from the community. And what were represented in this report that was done isn't just our ideas. There are ideas of, of things that we had received back from our feedback from the community and so forth. And I think that's really important. And your, and your team here at the city did an outstanding job of listening and putting it on paper, and actually making it come about. I do want to say one thing about the segways. You're going to struggle with it. We did, and I know that council did several years ago, trying to figure out whether they should or shouldn't be there. Once you ride motorized vehicles up there, everyone wonders when they see a Segway on there, is, is a Segway a motorized vehicle or not? Are they allowed to be on there, or not allowed to be on there? A lot of confusion from it. And then the other part that we really struggled with is that, you know, there's supposedly eight people that own segways that live here in Newport. You know, and if there was only eight people doing it, it wouldn't be a big deal. The, the individual that has a business here and operates, it says that he does small groups, and he does it in controlled fashion and so forth. But from my understanding, 25 to 30 people showed up in buses and did a tour along our peninsula, you know, as a Segway group. Well, if you have 25 or 30 people going along our, our boardwalk, or our oceanfront walk, you can imagine what it's like as an individual who's walking or riding a bike or so forth, or a child, seeing these things come at you. You know, even at eight miles an hour, they're very intimidating. So, it is a tough decision. It is a hard one that we struggle with. And I just mainly wanted to say thank you for, Councilman Hen, for putting this together, and for the hard work by the city staff in doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Well, you've already spoken, sir. Let me get one shot.
Hi, Kim Christie. Live on East Ocean Boulevard. I'm a, I guess, one of the eight Segway owners. And I had to come up after hearing about the, the 25 people on tour. I know Scott, the guy that, that runs it. I bought my Segway from his company. And he set our whole family through training, and we spent hours going through the thing. And he took us, you know, all through the systems and stuff. And it's very safe. We're all very safe on it. Wear helmets, the, the whole deal. But the reason why I came up is because maybe the 25 Segway owners, or the 25 people that rented the segways, maybe that's been once or twice. But, you know, even if it was that many people at one time, that's got to be the safest. There's, Scott runs the, the front of it, and he's got somebody behind him in the back of it. And there's never, never, I've never seen an issue with the people that rent from his company. They've always been safe, and I've never seen anybody else on a Segway doing wild and crazy things either. So, I don't know what the issues are with the segways, but I've never seen anything out of the ordinary on the boardwalk with them. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, signal one. I'll bring it back to council. Councilman Hen?
I guess it's boiling down to mainly doing better enforcement and outreach and educational work. The total cost of the recommendations that the committee has made, we're roughly estimating would be $20,000 or less. And the striping solution actually should have almost no incremental cost, because it's just a matter of regular repainting a single stripe instead of dashed line. So, I guess what I would also like to do is echo the most recent comments. City staff did a fabulous job supporting this whole activity. Brad Summers was great. Tara, thank you very much. Captain Johnson, terrific response. I mean, very constructive participation all throughout, as well as from the Boardwalk Steering Committee. I think you got a good sense of, from the public comment today, that there was a lot of really valid give and take about what's right and wrong, and what we should do or not do. And so, I was really happy with the whole process. The two things that we really would solicit views from council before we finalize our recommendations would be the Surry's. What to do about the Surry's? Is it, is it really just a, an unwinnable struggle to ban them, but let them be rented? And secondly, the segways, do we have a situation here with the recommendations of the business owner about how to limit their tour activity, and perhaps some regulation about outside entities doing tours in the city? Is that a combination that's reasonable, or is the inherent conflict there by banning motorized vehicles and yet allowing a motorized vehicle? Is that really an untenable conflict, too? So, I guess I would just solicit a little more con, a little more input from our fellow council members, and then we'll go back and see if we can't finalize a view of all this.
Councilman Webb?
I think I expressed it already. I think that it would be a good idea for us to investigate the prohibition of rental Surry cycles. I feel that there really isn't a safe spot for them to operate. The streets aren't wide enough. Well, I guess one of the problems with a Surry cycle is it's so wide that it takes up close to half of the sidewalk. There's no other room for people to go around it. We've had, I, I don't think we've had a serious accident problem, although I do know that seven or eight, 10 years, probably closer to 10 or 15 years ago, there was a bicycle Surry cycle accident that caused a lawsuit. But I think that, that we can sign all we want, and we can have them put all the signs on the Surry cycles. People just don't seem to read and understand that, and they end up on the sidewalk anyway. And I think we just ought to bite the bullet and say, let's get rid of them. As far as the segways are concerned, I think that's a different situation. And I think that that's a personal decision. I, I don't think that we've had an accident history, and I don't believe that, I personally have ridden on one, and I'm not, definitely not experienced, but even with the relatively short period of time, I, I saw how rapidly it stopped, and how maneuverable it was, and, and how I felt it was a good thing. I think that we need to continue to monitor the segways, but not pregnant. However, I do like the idea of the suggestion with, with getting more restrictive on our permits for people that are from out of town bringing things in. And maybe even limiting the, the size of tours to, to some number, to, to eliminate the, I can imagine 25 of them in a, in a line would be almost 150, 200 feet long. So, but maybe limiting it to five or six or 10 people or something to that effect.
Having to get a, any special permit if you're going to go over that, so that the city could monitor it. I would agree with you. I'm so ignorant of segways, I didn't even know they'd be considered motorized. I don't know what I, how I thought they ran, like the old railroad things, I guess. I just want to congratulate the committee on coming up with some reading, sensible ideas that, that don't cost an arm and a leg. That's great. And, and I would agree with, about the segways. Let's, let's put some, some regulations in place and, and monitor it. And if there is an issue later, after we have more, more enforcement of everything, then we can address it again.
There's one other thing I, I wanted to mention. I think it's a great idea for us to purchase and regularly use some of those radar monitoring devices and rotate
I, I still don't, I don't think that there's enough of them there to, to really make that much of a difference. And I think there's a distinction because the Segways basically that are operated here are operated by residents. It's not like a, a Surry where you're basically renting those to, to visitors, tourists who don't understand the rules, and, you know, they're here for one day and, and then they're gone. So, the Segway owners understand what they need to do to, to operate them safely, and I don't think that, at least as to the individual ones, we need any further regulation. I'd be happy to entertain, um, further, uh, regulation on maybe tours and things like that, although, again, that's an enforcement issue, too, and, you know, we're going to have police officers out there five or six days out of the year, and I, I imagine we're still going to have complaints afterwards on those days when they're not there, but I'd be willing to look at that. As far as the Surrys go, I, you know, I agree with Councilman Curry. It is family entertainment, but it, it seems like be, because of the size of them, until they invent a, maybe a two-man Surry, that only going to take up half the, you know, half of, half the walk so people can use the path. I mean, I, you know, I guess I could see my way clear to, to banning those things on the, on the walk as well, although I, I, you know, I, I think if people want to use them in the, in the street, you know, just like any other bicycle, I think that they should be able to, so.
Okay. Well, I think the committee did a generally a good job on the report, dealing with the difficult subject, um, and generally concur with the comments of the rest of the council up here, although I think that someday we're just going to have to either come up with a separate vehicle path from pedestrians because all we're doing is dancing around an issue here. They don't mix, and, uh, kids are going to be kids. I was a kid and rode a bicycle once, and I know how I rode it, and, uh, as long as they're on the same path as pedestrians, we're going to have problems. But I think is, uh, something to deal with the issue now. I think they're probably good recommendations.
You know, just out of curiosity, in your, in your deliberations, were there any significant reports of injuries or accidents, or did you do any kind of, uh, is there any history? Maybe the police officer can address this. As to, I mean, actual impacts as opposed to, I know there's a lot of anecdotal evidence, but do we have actual police reports or injury reports or things like that, or, I don't know. Fire department?
There are very few. Uh, we have not had, uh, over the course of time that I looked, there were no, uh, reported, uh, collisions that had occurred, but, again, anecdotally, I think that, that we all recognize that many of these collisions, crashes that occur go unreported to the actual police department, where the injuries are fairly minor or, or they're, uh, they, they don't occur at all. Uh, so, mo- most of the, the members of the, uh, of the committee reported seeing injuries, some very severe, some less severe, uh, that, that never made their way to the police department. Uh, so, we're, we're fairly certain that they occur in terms of the amount that are reported are, are very minor, or, or very minimal.
Yeah, I can just tell you from personal experience, uh, last summer I probably saw six accidents in, in the half a block area around my house, only one of which resulted in a police report where, uh, paramedics were called because the person who was obviously drunk hit the, hit the sidewalk so hard, he couldn't get up again. But, so there is a lot of unreported, uh, accidents that go on, so.
Okay. Any other comments on that? I think we got some direction going here in this one. So, uh, we've already had our public comments on non-agenda items, so we'll adjourn to closed session.